Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of July 8th, 2013. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And sign the reverse council. That is all. I do want to apologize for the lateness of this meeting, but we did have some important
information going on at our economic subcommittee in our zoning, so I felt it was appropriate to wait this extra time. So, roll call, please.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number one is the report of the zoning subcommittee.
Councillor Riordan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The agenda at the zoning subcommittee held at about 10 minutes to 5 this evening included four separate items, the first of which was C-13-04 CBW lending LLC, 745 Fifth Avenue, 18th floor, New York, New York, seeking permission of the Revere City Council to operate a commercial automotive storage parking facility at 190 VFW Parkway, Revere, Massachusetts, and for everybody's edification, that's at Wonderland. The matter was once again reviewed by the zoning subcommittee. The applicant had been before us back in June, and some questions were sent his way, and he came back and he answered them, presumably to the satisfaction of the subcommittee as the matter was reported out favorably. There were, and I expect a couple of amendments to be offered, and the zoning subcommittee favorably looked upon at least the consideration of those amendments, one of which involves the limited duration of the special permit, another of which involved a potential additional condition beyond what the site plan review has recommended regarding maintenance of the circle in front of the site. I'll just review quickly the Site Plan Review Committee recommendations. Number one, the use in question for a commercial automotive storage parking facility and shall not include a commercial parking lot, which by definition within the revised zoning ordinance means a lot, or structure for the purpose of storing or parking automobiles, buses, or trucks which is available to the public generally on a daily basis for a fee and which is not incident to or related to a principal use on the same lot, adjoining lots, or lots, and includes public commuter parking and public remote parking facilities, just as an aside, this simply means it can't be used as a parking for pay off-the-street facility. Two, the commercial automotive storage parking facility shall not occupy more than six acres, and the special permit shall specify the maximum number of parking spaces that shall be dedicated for the use. Three, the commercial automotive storage parking facility shall be principally accessed by Route 1A VFW Parkway only and shall not be accessed by any local roadway maintained by the city of Revere. And four, a 50-foot buffer strip must be provided between the commercial automotive storage parking facility and all abutting residential uses and along all property lines where such property lines front on a public way. The applicant was willing to accede to those site plan review recommendations. I would suggest that we have a further discussion on the potential amendments, Mr. President, on this matter before voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Riordan. Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make one amendment at the outset, that the number of trucks stored there be limited to what is currently there now, I believe it's 12 to 15 trucks, and that they be parked in an area furthest from the residences on Dunn Road, in that residential area down there, more toward the clubhouse. So I'd like to make that amendment.
Okay, that'll be one amendment. We'll do them all together. Okay. Counsel, that was discussed when we, at the meeting, and there's a 50-foot buffer from the property line, so is that the number?
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
What's the exact number of trucks?
How many trucks are we talking?
15.
Okay. 15, instead of 50. Mr. President? Thank you. Councillor Haas?
I'd like to amend it also to make it a two-year, and I'd like to have that sponsored by myself and Councillor Rigo.
And, who else is there? Any other amendments on that part? Okay, I would like to make an amendment that CBW lending LLC be required to join the Adopt an Island program and sponsor Butler Circle.
Correct.
And to work with Councillor Powers and myself to discuss the landscaping on it.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to make a substitute amendment to the two years and make it three years to be reviewed and renewed after the three-year, prior to the three-year limit. We'll take them up one at a time in order on a roll call vote, no, on a voice vote, yes.
The First Amendment shall be limiting the number of trucks to 15, and the trucks shall be parked from that 50-foot buffer zone mentioned and the other conditions from site plan review.
All in favor, all opposed? I'm sorry?
Yes.
All in favor, all opposed? Vote in so order.
On the motion of Councillor Haas, would like a two-year limit on the permit.
And I made an amendment to that for three years.
Yeah, and then Council President Novoselfsky, it would be a three-year limit on the permit with option for renewal.
Right.
Well, which one are we voting on first? Are we going to vote on Councillor Haas first?
The three-year first.
Three-year first?
Because that's the latest one done, so you work backwards. It's a substitute.
That's fine. A roll call vote, because of the...
No problem. We can do a roll call for the Second Amendment, which is for three years, renewable, just prior to that time. Okay? Roll call.
Councillor Rigo?
No.
No. Councillor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Guanasso?
No.
No. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Councillor Patch?
No.
No. Councillor Penta?
No.
No. Councillor Riordan?
No.
No. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, the motion fails.
On the two years, roll call.
Roll call on the two-year limit for the special permit. Councillor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, the amendment passes.
Next amendment, please.
The Third Amendment is that CBW lending LLC shall be required to sponsor Butler Circle and meet with Councillor Powers and Novoselfsky in terms of landscaping.
And just mention the, under the beautification program.
Sure. And this is under the beautification program.
All in favor, all opposed? Vote in so order. On the entire package, roll call.
Shall the relief request be granted for 190 VFW Parkway, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review and the conditions submitted by the city council? Councillor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions.
First of all, vote in so ordered. Let's vote in so ordered. We have suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed. Vote in so ordered. Reconsideration, hoping it will not prevail. All in favor, all opposed. Vote in so ordered. Back to regular order of business. Vote in so ordered.
Mr. President, next item on the agenda...
Councillor Riordan.
Next item on the agenda, actually, there was an earlier writer on the agenda, and it involves the stipulation of the parties, BJ's Wholesale Club versus the City Council and Rumney Marsh LLC, as we all know, and we heard this evening a little more explicitly. By the way, this is item number PUD-12-01. There's some confusion in the property right issues down at the BJ's when the special permit was issued, and the BJ's filed suit in order for clarification. There is a stipulation of the parties, that's before the city council, that has been recommended by the parties, and it reads as follows. "Now come the parties to the action and hereby stipulate as follows: The Revere City Council shall issue an amended decision that shall replace paragraph three with the following language: The PUD site plan provides for 280 parking spaces on the site of the residential component; an additional 51 parking spaces on the BJ's Wholesale Club retail component are dedicated to parking for the PUD residential component. All parking for the PUD residential component shall be confined to these spaces as set out on a plan entitled 'Residences at Rumney Marsh dated September 23, 2011, prepared by Apple Door Engineering.' These spaces shall be clearly marked for residential parking prior to the issuance of the building permit. The aforementioned plan is heretofore attached and is filed as Exhibit A to this agreement. The parties further agree that the amendment to the language of the special permit decision accurately reflects the original intent of the city council in granting the relief sought by the defendant, Rumney Marsh View LLC, and that it does not alter in substantive manner the relief sought by Rumney Marsh View LLC, nor the relief granted by the Revere City Council, and three, that upon adoption of the amended decision and recording of same at the Suffolk County Register of Deeds, the parties heretofore shall execute and file a stipulation of dismissal, signed at Revere, County of Suffolk, Massachusetts on this 29th day of May, 2013, and this was executed by James Sipletter for BJ's Wholesale and our city solicitor, Paul Capisi. The matter needs to be taken up, obviously, by the city council to amend that special application that was apparently worded inappropriately. So I would leave that up to the council to vote on this matter this evening.
Thank you, Counsel. We actually would do a roll call on the recommendation of the subcommittee to adopt the stipulation. Roll call.
Councillor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, the stipulation of parties has been adopted.
Vote in so ordered. Councillor Riordan?
The next three items on the agenda this evening before the zoning subcommittee involve Black Marble Motorcycles LLC, 1762 Revere Beach Parkway, Everett, Massachusetts, seeking first, the first is C-13-11, seeking a special permit from the Revere City Council for a commercial garage use to enable the appellant to operate a motorcycle franchise at the properties located at 649-655 Squire Road, Revere, and 1 Wesley Street, Revere, Mass. within the industrial parking zone district, that should probably read the applicant. C, I don't know, would you care to take these up separately, Mr. President, or would you like to hear them all?
Separately, please.
All right, that is...
Let's do 11 first.
That's C-13-11.
Are there any site plan review recommendations to attach?
As a matter of fact, regarding all of these, I presume, well, both of the special permits, site plan review has authored a total of 13 separate recommendations. I'll quickly run through them. Number one, improvements shall be made to the existing parking lot and entrance drive off Wesley Street and Squire Road to improve circulation patterns for entering and exiting traffic. Improvements shall include a new tree line median adjacent to the access easement off of Wesley Street, which shall serve to separate traffic flow between 649-655 Squire Road and 1 Wesley Street. Two, the parking lot in front of 649-655 Squire Road shall be upgraded with new islands and pavement markings. All new islands shall include trees and shall have either precast concrete or granite curbing. Three, all light poles within the site shall be replaced with new light poles with LED lighting. Four, all drain lines within the site of 649-655 Squire Road and 1 Wesley Street shall be televised to ensure that they are structurally sound. All necessary repairs shall be made to these drain lines, catch basin structures, and manholes if determined to be inadequate by the city engineer. I can't imagine they meant televised, but they probably meant examined by television technology, or film technology of some sort. Number five, all existing stormwater outfalls from both sites shall be inspected and cleaned, and all outfall slopes shall be stabilized to prevent erosion if necessary. Six, the existing paved swale along the easterly property line of the site shall be cleaned of all debris to allow for uninterrupted stormwater flow as originally designed. Seven, a new fire hydrant shall be installed within the site as determined by the Revere Fire Department. Eight, a Chapter 148 license shall be obtained for both 649-655 Squire Road and 1 Wesley Street. Nine, the two 300-gallon fuel tanks with pumps shall be reviewed and approved by the Fire Department. The two proposed dumpsters and fuel pumps shall be enclosed by screening and shall be screened along the easterly edge with the planting of six-foot to eight-foot-high evergreens. Eleven, the landscaping plan shall include the planting of 21 trees within the parking lot in front of the site. The landscaping plan shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. Twelve, a new 20-foot-wide concrete plaza walkway shall be installed along the front of the building and shall include a handicap access ramp. Thirteen, the area around the existing sanitary sewer pump station located within the parking lot shall be landscaped in accordance with the landscape plan to be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. That is the total of the Site Plan Review recommendations on both special permit matters. And it is, as all three matters were reported out favorably by the zoning subcommittee, I am recommending for a vote here this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. And what we'll do is, I'm going to apply the two motion, permit requests with the site plan review attached to both of those. There's nothing on here about signage, so that will not be applied to the signage application.
There's a separate application for signage, it's not a special permit application.
That's correct, and there's no site plan review for it.
If you would care, I'd read C-13-12 into the record right now, which is the second special permit application, if you prefer that done.
We have to vote on them one at a time, so stand by.
But the site plan review will apply to both?
Both, that's correct, thank you. I also am receipt of a letter from a Robert Di Maria requesting his objections be read into the record, and I'm going to ask the clerk to read the letter.
I hereby submit my concerns in regard to Black Marble Motorcycles LLC and their request for a series of special permits for the property located at 649-655 Squire Road, and request that it become part of and read into the record. I'm sure all of you are aware of the excessive noise that motorcycles create. As a community, we're already dealing with a tremendous amount of noise pollution because of the major roads that intersect here. As a result, our quality of life is greatly diminished. In fact, the noise level has been so problematic along Route 1 that this council has made repeated requests to the Mass TOT to install sound barriers along that stretch of roadway to provide relief to the residents who live there. However, those repeated requests have so far fallen on deaf ears. Now, a major Harley-Davidson dealership wants to locate here, and I would expect this honorable body to raise concerns regarding the noise that an establishment of that nature would bring to our community. I'm sure that the proponents would argue that they've been in business in Everett for years and haven't had any complaints regarding noise. However, I would remind this council that their present location doesn't abut a residential neighborhood, and what matters more is what is in the best interest of area residents. Consequently, I would request that this council create a number of conditions that the proponent would have to abide by. First, as a dealership, I would assume that it would include a repair shop. Therefore, I would insist as a condition to their special permit that all repairs remain within a closed-door environment, so as not to create a nuisance for surrounding residents. Second, I would insist that no test rides of motorcycles for sale or repair be conducted within the parking lot, especially considering the lot adjacent to the former Bally Fitness Center is expansive and runs parallel to a residential neighborhood. Third, I would request that the council impose limits with an enforcement mechanism related to the level of noise that can emanate from the property and have the city solicitor draft it to ensure it can sustain any court challenge. The limits imposed should include strict penalties and escalating fines for repeated violations. If a council member disagrees, I would encourage them to visit the website, noiseoff.org, for an education of noise pollution from motorcycles. Ironically, this website has a video of a news report from Channel 4 which discusses how this problem has affected communities in our own area. The report details how, when a motorcycle comes from the factory, the exhaust system is EPA-approved. The EPA sets noise emission standards for motorcycle exhaust systems. However, according to the proponent's own manager, Mike Sinescowicz, who was interviewed for the report, we usually see 60% to 70% of riders change the pipes out, which significantly increases the noise level. As a result, I would request that the council place restrictions on any gathering of motorcycle enthusiasts, especially for promotional events. According to the proponent's own website, they will be sponsoring an annual biker barbecue at their location in Everett on July 20th. Although that type of event might be appropriate there, it shouldn't be held in Revere. Their website also indicates that they have 11,000 MVP members. If the proponent's own representative is correct, and 60% to 70% of riders have illegal exhaust pipes that are louder than what the EPA allows, can you imagine the nightmare it could cause residents if only a tenth of them showed up to celebrate an event here? If the proponent wants to sponsor such events, let them lease space at Suffolk Downs or another more appropriate venue. Finally, with respect to the proponent's request for a special permit for modification of the massive billboard sign that abuts Route 1, I would urge the council to deny it. In fact, as a condition of granting any approval to this applicant, I would respectfully insist that the city council demand the sign's removal. With four huge pylons to support it, this massive sign is 110 feet high and is grotesque in its appearance. In fact, there is nothing redeeming about it whatsoever, and it's been an eyesore not only to the immediate residents below it, but to anyone traveling on Route 1. It also reflects poorly on us as a community. I would encourage any councillor who disagrees to drive down Spring and Jordan Streets to see just how disturbing it looks from the homes of the residents who live closest to it. Even former city councillor Joseph Delgrasso, for whom this chamber was named, was quoted saying, "Who are you advertising to, Martians? It is an absolute disgrace that it was ever granted approval to be erected in the first place, and although I won't begin to speculate as to how or why it was approved, it was a mistake that this honorable body now has the opportunity to rectify." If the Harley-Davidson dealership wants to advertise its business, they can install a sign directly on the former Bally Fitness Center building. In fact, a sign that's clearly visible from the highway has existed on the building without issue for years. Sincerely, Robert C. Di Maria.
Okay, we'll reattach that to the package. Can you place that on file, please? It will be attached to the package, and that'll be it. Does that city request it? It'll be attached to CZ-13, 11, 12, and 13. We have a couple folks here. Are you involved in this, ma'am and sir? I'd like to say, sure, ma'am, come up to the microphone, if you would.
We need to call today.
Would you give me a name, name and address?
My name is Helene Coveney, I live at 616 Lynn Street.
Okay.
We live opposite the sign. I look at that sign every day. That was put up many years ago, it wasn't approved many years ago, just went up and no one ever took it down. As far as the traffic that's involved, we live in a highly, it's a disaster. I got hit one day leaving my yacht. Everyone gets hit in my area. You put a bunch of motorcycles in with all the noise, we're in a lot of trouble. I'm asking you for your help. All of us in that area, we've put up with enough. And putting a motorcycle place in and having that sign, I'm just asking you just to stop some of it. Thank you. That's it. I don't know what else to say, except it's not good for us and it's not good for the neighbors. Thank you.
Ma'am, is that Revere-Malden, or sorry?
I live on the Malden-Revere line. I pay taxes to Malden and I pay taxes to Revere.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Counselor Patch?
I just want to inform that lady, that the...
What's your name?
I'd like to inform you that the sign that we're going to be voting on tonight...
I heard that today. We just found out.
Yeah, we haven't, I was in the council when that was put up, so that, I'd be the first one to tear it down, but we have no say in the matter.
Revere didn't approve it to be put up like that.
We...
I know that for a fact.
Well, I wasn't around then, so I don't know.
I know, but Revere did not approve it. They put it up so high, and they just never took it down.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Right, but all I want to do is...
We understand that it's old history right now.
And we have no say in it.
Right, and what the counsel, Patch, is trying to say is, the sign we're dealing with tonight is going to be the one on Squire Road, not the one, that tall one, that has no effect on any of the issues that we have. We understand where you're coming from.
But the other sign, when it does, when it does come in front of you, can you please have it taken down? It's a horrible sign.
Right now, it's not, and there's no request to do anything with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am, sir. Okay, on C-13-11, with the site plan review recommendations, roll call.
Shall the relief request be granted on the application of Black Marble Motorcycles Inc. on application C-13-11, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Councillor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
Vote in so ordered. On C-13-12, Counsel Riordan?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, again, Black Marble LLC at the aforementioned address, seeking a special permit from the Revere City Council for class-one vehicle sales use and warehouse use to enable the appellant, again, the applicant, to operate a motorcycle franchise at the properties located at 649-655 Squire Road, Revere, Mass., and 1 Wesley Street, Revere, Massachusetts, within the industrial park zoning district. Again, that was subject to the aforementioned site plan review conditions, as you have noted, Mr. President, and it was reported out favorably by the zoning subcommittee members for both this evening.
On the subcommittee's report on C-13-12, roll call.
Shall the relief request be granted on the application of Black Marble Motorcycles Inc. C-13-12, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Councillor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Novoselfsky?[1720.28]
Again, Black Marble Motorcycles LLC at the aforementioned address, seeking a special permit from the revered City Council to enable the applicant to modify a non-conforming sign at the property located at 649-655 Squire Road, Revere, Massachusetts. Again, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. This was reported out favorably by the zoning subcommittee as well, Mr. President.
On the recommendation of the subcommittee for C-13-13 for non-conforming sign, roll call.
Shall the relief request be granted on the application of Black Marble Motorcycles Inc. C-13-13? Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Nowoselski?[1603.83]